All right. Good morning, everybody. It is eleven o'clock and I see most folks on just Mr. Goheen jump on. So I think we'll go ahead and get started this morning, just to respect your time. I will call this meeting to order. Good morning, everybody. It is Monday, July eleventh, eleven A M. And we'll call this special board meeting to order as we do at every board meeting. I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions and making decisions for the district to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So again, good morning, board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, and to all of our staff that are joining this morning. Good morning to anyone that is watching and joining us via Zoom or some other medium. Thanks for joining us this morning. With that, I would have Ms. Smith, please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie Humphreys, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Under Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good morning, everybody. So now would entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Smith. All right. So we'll jump right in to our agenda. The first item is our underboard discussion, item A, the continuation of our of our discussion as a board on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So I will go ahead and pass this along to Dr. Stubblefield and to Ms. Kaiser, who are both here with us to continue the conversation discussion and to hopefully answer any questions that the board may have, may have. So again, good morning, Ms. Kaiser and Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll pass it along to you.
Good morning. In looking at the agenda, the the budget, the general budget, there's not any new information there. And I think today, one, just to see if there were any questions from the board. But I think the main item for today was really around the revenue neutral rate. So I didn't, the board's preference is to start there because that's the piece that has a deadline tied to it. And it, and it, within that PowerPoint, Ms. Kaiser has built in just some other general information, I believe. I'm trying to pull it up.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So before we jump into the revenue neutral rate, just, and I know we're going to discuss the board budget as well. But any generic questions about the budget overall that Ms. Kaiser or Dr. Stubblefield can answer before we move on to the discussion on revenue neutral rate? So open it up to the board, their board, if there are any questions generically about the budget.
And I'll just remind the board, we have our next meeting with principals will be back this week. And so we will be bringing probably at the July twenty-seventh special meeting the information around the building needs assessments and the four questions. But because they are, we have a meeting today and tomorrow, and then we see them on the fourteenth. That's the next special meeting, budget meeting. But any information that we have be, that we may obtain before that, we will bring, I'll send it out to the board as soon as possible around that. But that's when we'll probably bring that information back.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. And Rachel, I see your hand up just really quickly. And if Tracy or Dr. Stubblefield, if you could just remind the board what, what our timeline or, excuse me, our process looks in terms of timing moving forward in order to get our budget passed and move forward, what that would look like. And you don't have to do that right now, but just generically what that'll look like over the next several meetings. And I know we have to, you know, have our public meeting. And, and so if you could just give us that at some point, whether today or tomorrow's meeting as well. And then I'll ask Ms. Russell.
Yeah, Mr. Lopez, that is actually on my presentation for the revenue neutral rate. It kind of depends on what direction the board goes with that. It will change our timeline, but that is on the end, the end of the presentation that we can review today.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Um, I guess I have a couple of questions regarding the board needs assessment questions. So I can see some of the questions have already started to get asked in the Google Doc that's on the drive. But I don't recall what the fourth question is. So if someone could tell me what the fourth question is. And then I guess I, as I'm reading through these, I'm seeing a lot of themes and things that aren't necessarily addressed. The first theme I see is staffing. Other themes I see are incentives. And I guess I'm just trying to also understand the process in which we will correlate what we're being told with what, how we made budget decisions to make the, to address, number one, the barriers, but also the additional resources that are being asked for. And when I go between this document and our other document, I'm not quite seeing how those go back to budget decisions outside of staffing. And so I guess I could start there and see if what I'm saying makes sense.
No, it does. And that's part of what I'm saying when we come back to you after we wrap back around to principles because we need to connect some dots in general as well. One of the things I will say this year, there weren't any additional budget requests where the board would have to make a decision. So last year, there were things added like we need an, you know, additional administrators or we need five more science teachers. Everything that was being requested or saying that they needed was either allocated in a previous budget year. And so right now we're trying to streamline, or in some cases, they ask for things and never fill those positions. So they were still trying to fill them. So there weren't any new budget items per se, where the board had to make a particular budget decision around adding or reallocating resources. The other layer that we had, that the board has given feedback on or we've responded to had to do more with ESSER dollars. There are a lot of things that maybe typically would have been asked for budget allocation that we included in ESSER, for example, like the Avid, the plans implement Avid, the expansion of JAG K, the training around restorative justice. A lot of those things right now will be taken out of ESSER dollars. And so then like in a year or so, we don't have a cost neutral way they, and we have data to support it. Those will be things that we would be asking the board to take action around. So honestly, Rachel, I mean, this is a new process for all of us and is new in that. But because we're not really asking for a lot of additional dollars to be allocated, it, there is some disconnect. So that's part of us having an internal meeting to clean it up for you. And I, I'm sorry, I may have been saying four questions, maybe three. I'm trying to pull it up. But that last question is the timeline, like, and how long do you think it will take to move the, the move the students? And so that's all of the stuff that we'll bring back on the twenty-seventh. So I hope I answered your question because I know I said a lot and crossed over.
That's how I felt while I was trying to figure out the words I wanted to say. But no, that answers my question. And I thank you for the work that you all are doing on this. I, I look forward to the July meeting and hearing about how all the things are addressed. But I do think that the piece that I heard that stood out the most was that for now, we're able to use ESSER dollars for some of the other asks that are being asked. And so, got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Other questions from board members? If not, then I will ask Ms. Kaiser. I know the board budget was next on the agenda, but we'll just switch and have the revenue neutral rate conversation and discussion. Ms. Kaiser, if you're ready for that, we can go ahead and jump to that and then move to the board budget afterwards.
Are you able to see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this information is the, the same information as I shared at the last meeting. The main date is the July twentieth is when we would need to notify the county clerk if we are going to be exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And as a reminder, the assessed valuation we have at this point in time is estimated. We actually do not receive the true actual assessed valuation until November first. And again, that the revenue neutral rate sets the maximum mill levy, the budget actually sets the maximum dollar amount. So K S D E is recommending that we go ahead and notify the county to exceed the revenue neutral rate, publish a notice and hold the hearing, and then the board will decide the dollar amount at the actual, when they, when you actually approve the budget. And then I wanted to kind of give some additional information, though, what it would look like. So right now, the district mill levy is forty-nine point six five nine. If we leave the mill levy the same, it would generate another two point three million dollars from local taxpayers and one point one million in state aid. So our budget really would increase three point four million. The library mill levy would generate nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars more. So I've got there the, the homeowner impact, if we leave the mill levy the same, it would be an increase in their annual taxes. And then if we decide to keep the same dollar amount, not exceeding the revenue neutral rate, it would be decreased in the mill levy for the district of two point six eight mils. And the library mill levy would go down a little over one mil. I would caution, though, that if the board decides to stay with the same dollar amount, we actually do decrease the mill levy, that I would recommend that we go ahead and submit a revenue neutral rate with a small increase, maybe around a mil, just to make sure that we can fully fund the budget if the valuations do come in lower in November. So that would be my recommendation. But going forward strategically, I also think that we need to remember, you know, if we're going to be looking at a bond down the road or, you know, also considering the increases in salaries and costs and supply chain issues and fuel. You know, to keep the same dollar amount will put a strain on the budget to some extent. But that is obviously the board's decision on how you guys would like to do it. Just thinking though, down the road, if we are going to do a second bond, then if we are changing the mill levy at this point in time, it might be more of a significant increase to do a bond. So. And then I did get the timelines here. So it just depends on really which way the board wants to go. Either way, we're going to need to know by July nineteenth, have that official vote for you guys to decide. And if you guys can give us some feedback today on your thoughts, you know, we can go ahead and move forward. But if we do exceed the revenue neutral rate, it gives us until September twentieth to submit the board, the budget to K S D E and the county clerk. If we do not exceed the revenue neutral rate, the budget is due to K S D E and the county clerk by August twenty-fifth. So I will open it up to questions and any other information I can provide to you.
Thank you. Tracy would open up the floor to the board for any questions for Ms. Kaiser. Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any questions to Tracy. So board, you have this presentation in front of you. If questions do come up or if you have any further clarification, please send any questions to Dr. Stubblefield and Ms. Kaiser so we can get that clarified for you. But it looks like at our July nineteenth board meeting, definitely have some decisions to make. So. Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, that's great. And I just will point out on July nineteenth, it does have to be a roll call vote. That is required in the law to do that. So either way it goes, we need to do the roll call, though, just a reminder. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Right. Again, where questions come up between now and the nineteenth, please make sure you send those along. All right. So next on our agenda is a conversation on the Board of Ed budget. So board, we did review this a bit at our last meeting, one of our last budget meetings. And I did send an email to you all yesterday afternoon with a draft budget, as I said, I would. Again, just kind of proposing some draft numbers for us to react to and have a discussion on. Definitely not anything that I'm saying that should be done, obviously. So I will go ahead and I think the presentation that's on board docs may not be the one that I sent you yesterday. So let's see if I can pull that up. But I'll open the floor up to questions or discussion on the word budget. Ms. Kaiser, yes?
I did just want to answer one question I received that was asking what the L A F contract renewal was and the L R P subscription. The L A F is the K A S B Legal Assistance Fund. I think it was around twenty-three hundred. And the L R P subscription is a publication for educators that was twenty-one hundred. And those were both paid for in twenty-twenty-one, and that was just the, what the acronym stood for. I wanted to explain that.
Great. Thank you so much, Tracy. And then just a couple of other notes, board. If you saw in the budget that I sent yesterday, I did move a couple, move some dollars in different line items. The K A S B renewal did go under line item eight, under dues and fees rather than other expenses, I think is where it was placed previously. So I think we were just trying to make sure that key things are input in the, in the correct line item. So, but I did make a note of that on the budget. So you should, you should have been able to see where that came from. I did, again, just based on the feedback from the board, from conversations that we've had, I did add some, potentially put some money in the budget for us to host a board listening tour and or community events based on feedback from the board wanting to be out in the community a little bit more. And that would also include, I did get some feedback from some board members about community events such as, and this is just an example, you know, when United Way of Mind County used to host an event, the board would often buy seats for board members to attend. So things like that would, would, could also come out of that line item budget. And then the, 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 one of the other line items that I, just to make sure to point that out, is under travel. So there was a lot of conversation about out of district travel and professional development. So in the proposed budget that I put together, it would allow for all seven board members to attend the NSAB conference, National Conference, and the K A S B conference, and then one other national conference of the board members choosing. So each board member would be allowed, would, there, it's budgeted for each board member to at least attend the NSAB and the K A S B conference and one other conference if you so chose to. I understand that not all board members would go to every conference or to either the K A S B or the NSAB, but just wanted to make sure it was in the budget if that were the choice of the board. Again, just a draft budget. If we decided to do something different, we definitely could. And so that third conference could be, and there were questions about, or suggestions such as the NSAB Equity Summit or the Cube Conference. So I would, what I did was allow for the board members to choose which they would like to do. But again, that's just a suggestion, something for us to consider and think about. And then I did include, continue to include some dollars for the K A S B Training Professional Development, which would include our board evaluation, would include the sessions with Dr. Weisman or someone else from K A S B to continue our professional development, especially around goal setting that we'll be doing in August. And, and I just thought that would be something good for us to continue to revisit, maybe on a quarterly basis, to have someone meet with the board and do some professional development. I just think that's important for us as we continue to grow and work together as a board. And then the consultant line item is a little bit different. So that is for, for instance, someone like, well, an outside third-party consultant who come in and do some continued professional development, there is some, some money budgeted for that as well. So you'll see in the budget that I did send, it was about the same as what was budgeted for this past year, a few hundred dollars less than. So, and then additionally, there was a question about year-to-date actual budget through June thirtieth. Thank you, Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Smith, who both sent that to the board. So board, hopefully you had a chance to review that as well to kind of see where dollars were actually spent as of June thirtieth. So with that, I'll just kind of pause and see if there are any questions or thoughts or feedback. Again, this is just kind of a starting point for us today. Okay, I don't see any questions or comments. So, and I'll be sure to wrap, wrap back around with Ms. Paige, who's unfortunately not on the call with us today. She had another commitment. So I'll make sure just to, to answer any questions or to get her questions and make sure that those get sent to the board if she does have any as well. So seeing no other questions, I think we can go ahead and move on. If, I know we have another meeting tomorrow morning, I think, or tomorrow afternoon. So if more questions pop up, we can discuss those tomorrow, but review that. I know it wasn't a ton of time since I sent that yesterday afternoon, but hopefully you have a chance to look that over and we can discuss. So thank you. Dr. Nguyen, yes?
Good morning. I just had the question, this L R P, the publication for educators, do we ever, does the board ever see it? What, which one is this?
Dr. Nguyen, I am not sure. That was paid for last year, and I don't know who actually utilized that subscription.
Is that, and this is, I don't know if this is the right one. I don't remember the title. But I know Ms. Smith often gets some publication at the board library. And I know she usually gives it out at the board meetings when she does receive it. So I'm wondering if that's the one that she, that, that's the L R P. Ms. Smith, you remember offhand? Because I know you, you give that in our folders when you give, during a board meeting. So just curious if that's the one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, so those little blue sheets of board tips, and what is the cost of that? Twenty-three thousand dollars?
Two thousand one hundred.
Oh, two thou, twenty-one hundred dollars?
Yes.
Hmm. Okay, thank you. At least we know what it is.
Thanks, Dr. Nguyen. Any other questions? Okay. As always, if you have more questions, please make sure you send those along as well. All right. So we will move right along with our agenda. Next up is policy review. For last time, we, so first up on the agenda are the K A S B policy updates that are up for second read. There was a group of policies that we reviewed last time that Mr. Goheen, that came from K A S B. Mr. Goheen suggested that we adopt as they were presented. So that is up for second read today. And you have those listed on the board docs, so you can see those. So would entertain a motion to accept K A S B policy updates as presented for a second read?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion or Mr. Goheen, anything else you need to add on those that are presented?
No, not on that batch.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie, yes.
Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next agenda item would be to accept modified K A S B policy J H C. And I know there was some, for first read, and there were some suggestions for Mr. Goheen. So I'll let Mr. Goheen maybe walk through this one with us for a minute before we open it to the board.
Yeah, so your board policy J H C, which deals with student organizations, differs very slightly from K A S B's model policy. K A S B is recommending making changes to both the section of policy dealing with student clubs, which are sponsored by the school, and also making changes to the section that's, that's headlined or titled non-school-sponsored student clubs. My recommendation is that because of the differences you have in your language with the differences that K A S B has in their student club section, that you only make the modifications to the non-school-sponsored student club section that K A S B is recommending. And their recommended change in that language is highlighted in the attachment with, on the board agenda. It's just where it says, the non, pardon me, the non-school-sponsored club shall specify in its facility use request the adult who will be providing supervision to the activity. That, that differs slightly, that your current policy provides that a faculty member or other adult approved in advance may attend meetings as a supervisor, but may not participate in the group's activities. The main issue here is that, or the main difference or distinction is because it's a non-school-sponsored activity, K A S B is recommending moving that away from having a faculty member be in attendance or be necessarily be a sponsor. In other words, having the non-school-sponsored club specify who their adult supervisor would be. But this is up to the board, if you want to make that change or not. The, the notion or idea is that if you have somebody that's non-school-sponsored, do you really want it to be a faculty member that is serving as the sponsor of that event or that club?
Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Questions for Mr. Goheen on this policy presented? Seeing no question. So, excuse me. Would entertain a motion to accept the modified K A S B policy update for J H C for a first read as presented and suggested by Mr. Goheen?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey. Janie Humphreys, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item is item C, to accept modified K A S B policy D F A C for a first read. Mr. Goheen?
So this one does bear, again, a bit of a question for how the board wants to handle this particular policy. The main recommendation for the policy change from K A S B is simply to eliminate the reference to policy C M A, which you guys should do because one of the other things you're doing is getting rid of policy C M A. Again, at K A S B's recommendation, they're eliminating that policy. However, the other thing that you want to consider, and this is, this is for the board's discretion or discussion, your policy currently differs a little bit from K A S B's model policy. And that is because if you look at the model policy that's, that's pulled up in the third paragraph, it starts off with a bulleted listing of items that are required as part of the fiscal management standards for federal funding. And then you've got some record-keeping policies that follow that, again, in a bulleted point. And then sub-recipient monitoring, again, with some bulleted outlined provisions. The way your district has handled this in the past is rather than having those bulleted points being kept in the policy, you guys have allowed the superintendent and the district to maintain it. That is part of the financial management system and have a manual for administration of federal grants. It's a separate document. District to maintain a, that is part of the financial management system and, and have a manual for administration of federal grants. It's a separate document. You can do it either way you want to do it. If you want to keep your current policy and keep those provisions in a separate manual. That's perfectly fine. If you want to do that, then the only modification you would make to your current policy would be to eliminate the reference to C M A. Alternatively, if you want to adopt the full model K S B policy, you would be. Moving, um, those provisions, those bulleted point provisions into your actual policy document, rather than keeping them in a separate procedural manual. So that's, that's the, the two, um, well, that's the decision point the board needs to make in terms of what you want to adopt as your policy or maintain as your policy D F A C.
Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Any thoughts or questions from the board on that? Sounds like we've got to figure out which direction we wanted to go on. This policy, um, just, Mr. Goheen, any, any pros, cons, any recommendation from, from you in terms of what would be best, um, on either of those?
The, the only, the only thing I could suggest is. In my mindset, um, you, you don't, you want one document that lays out what the requirements are. Um, which is I believe why you currently have it referenced as a policy for administration of federal grants, so that you don't have. An inconsistency between your policy and that administrative manual. Um, certainly the board can look at and review that administrative manual if it wanted to, to make sure that that complies with, with. What the board's desires are, but really that's a grant manual requirement that just lays out the specific requirements the feds are going to look at, if they're going to audit or look at any kind of grant. Um, the bullet points that K S B have put in there, they mirror, um, the requirements for the grant proposals that are in that, that manual. There's nothing wrong with having them in your policy. If you prefer to have them in your policy. You just need to make sure that the policy and the manual are the same. That's the big issue.
Thank you. Any thoughts from board members?
Well, I would think that we might want to follow what they are suggesting through K A S B.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Other, other board members? Okay, so. Uh, Mr. Goheen, would you help us with a?
Yeah, I, I think if Ms. Drew, if Ms. Drew would like to make a motion, the motion would be to adopt, um. The, uh, uh. Model policy, D F A C, uh, with the recommended revisions from K S B. And that would, that the effect of that would be to change your current policy D F. A C to mirror or be the same as the K S B model policy.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we adopt not a policy with recommendation of provisions of D F A C by K A S B.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further questions or discussion?
And that would be for the first read.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Seeing here none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. The next item is the modified K S B policy update for G A A and Mr. Going.
So on G A A, again, K S B has a, a additional couple of sentences in their policy. In this particular instance, I don't recommend. I recommend that you do not add those two additional policies. I, I recommend you keep your current policy as is. But they also are removing, uh, the reference to policy C M A, which you are eliminating as well. So I, I would recommend you have a motion to modify the board's current policy G A A. To remove the reference to policy C M A.
Thank you. Sir, a motion to modify the current G A A policy to remove, um, C M A.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on that policy? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and thank you, board. Next item is item E to accept modified K S B policy update I N G for a first read, Mr. Goheen.
So on this particular one, my recommendation is that you adopt the, um, modifications proposed by K S B to this. This policy, this is a policy on allowing or permitting service dogs or service animals primarily. Um, I, I would recommend one modification to K S B's policy. K S B makes a specific reference to, uh, a federal law. And obviously there are state laws that could apply as well. So my, my recommendation is you eliminate the word federal and the, the reference. Simply be to applicable law. You can see, you can see it on the marked one on your, on your document in that first line to the side.
You, any questions? There are a motion to adopt proposed K S B modifications, um, for policy. I N G including, uh, and to eliminate the word federal and insert applicable.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other questions or discussion? And this is for first read, I'm sorry. Okay, seeing here none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Great. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, um, before we finish up, board, um, just a couple of, uh, things I was reminded of, a couple of questions. Um, that came up that just want to try to clarify, um, under the board budget, there was a question. Um, so we're going to jump back up to the board budget. My, my apologies. Um, under the board budget, there was a question regarding, um, food purchases and, um, and or, um. The, the snacks and, and things that are purchased for the board meetings, um, which. Line item that comes from specifically also the, the, um, the board dinner that, the, the salads that are purchased for the board members. Um, at the board meeting. Can anyone provide some clarity on that, Ms. Kaiser?
Yes, I sure can. Sorry, I didn't answer that prior. Um, those actually are coming out of the communications budget right now. They order those and, um. Those being paid out of there. I recommend that we split it out so that you guys can actually see your costs, um, but we can do that going forward next year. And, um, any other food costs would just fall into that, that food cost column. Sometimes though, I will say, um, depending on who's doing it, you know, it could come out of superintendent's budget sometimes also if, if they're ordering it and things like that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Dr. Win.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Lopez. On the, on the actual expenditures, can you remind me what the, we budgeted four thousand, four thousand? And we spent twenty, uh, twenty-five, what was, what was that for?
Which, which budget item was that? Again, I'm sorry, Dr. Win, I didn't hear that.
Looking at the expenditures. Um. Code five eight nine zero zero. We budgeted four thousand, spent twenty-five thousand. I don't, can't re- remind me again, please?
Give me just a minute and I'll get that pulled up, the detail.
Okay, thank you.
And while Ms. Kaiser is looking for that, the other question board for us just to also just, um. Finish up on and we can have that conversation today, or again, we do have a meeting tomorrow. We wanted to have. Um, some time tomorrow as well, is just around the student services recognition, um, of students and staff. Um, whether that is a part of our budget, I know, or I'm sorry, not student services recognition, student recognition, um, which was going. Which is a part of student services, um, does that need to also be included as part of our budget? Um, and then. What that looks like. I know there was conversation about maybe holding a semester celebration for students, um, to gather them back all in and do something nice for them. So just thinking about what that may look like, there was a conversation that did, we had previously and just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that. Ms. Kaiser.
All right, it took me a few minutes to pull that up. So that was, um, actually the K A S B workshops, K A S B membership. And student of the month awards, and I believe in, uh, Mr. Lopez's proposal. He actually moved that up to dues and fees, which would be the more appropriate place to put that.
Okay, thank you. But when then. Okay, so are you telling me? Okay, so then that, I understand you're going to use fifty-eight one hundred instead of fifty-nine hundred for those expense expenses. Okay, and then help me remember, um. Why we. Did, or did we carry over the ninety-five six for secretaries five one five one zero? I don't remember what your proposed budget number was, Mr. Lopez.
It didn't carry over, uh, um, because the previous year, I guess it just rolled over when the previous board clerk could earn overtime. They would have to budget. And I think it was budgeted off the previous year's overtime, but when the position was changed and separated. From the hourly, now it's a flat rate because the position does not, um, qualify for overtime.
Okay, so where does that, tell me, help me remember again, please, where that twenty-eight seven goes? Someplace.
Yeah.
The twenty-eight seven, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The difference in the amount, um, it, if it wasn't reallocated, it then flows back just into the general budget.
Okay.
But if it could be, if there was something else that the board decided that they needed those dollars for, it could be reallocated within the board's budget, but right now it's just. Outside of it, unless, I think it actually did get reallocated when you look at the bottom line, because your budget didn't decrease by twenty-eight. So it may have been. The travel line may have been increased more permanently. Remember last year we shifted some dollars. So it might have been absorbed there. Um, it, the, since the budget did remain the same, so I misspoke, I'm sorry.
So I guess my global question is. When these funds are not reallocated. And they, and you must close out all budgets June thirtieth. Where do we see that? For lack of a better word, that reconciliation. Where, is that in the final, well, I'll just say, where do we see that?
That's all part of our end of year transfers, um, you know, where we're potentially moving, um, like if, if. Southern places, if we need the money for, we have to move salaries into, um, capital outlay, the maintenance salaries, things like that. Or if we do have leftover funds in general fund, then we won't move as many of those salaries. Um, we also do transfers in between supplemental, general, L O B, and at risk based on where those salaries come in. So that's just kind of all of our end of year process. And then if there's any money left over, then obviously we wouldn't, like, sometimes we will, um, transfer more to special education. Anticipating we won't have to do as much the next year. So that's just kind of our year end closing process.
So the question is, is there a document that shows that final transfer? Process?
We have not done that in the past because it's kind of continuation. And then also when we get our audit, sometimes they will have us change things. So there's, um. It's kind of a process all the way through December, honestly, before we actually finish finally closing the entire year and don't make any further changes.
Now, the final document is really going to give you the exact, uh, final audited information is going to be that audit document that you'll get in December.
That is correct. Yes, thank you, Brad.
All right, thank you, Dr. Win. Thanks, Brad and Tracy. Okay, other final questions on, on that, um. On the board budget, um, so regarding the student of the month recognition, um, I do think, I like the suggestion of budgeting some dollars for the board to host. Um. At semester, you know, one per semester, I think is what was suggested, um, for students to, to bring students back and to do something, you know. Um, nice and to recognize our students and staff. And so, um, if that's the direction I'm looking at, looking at my screen to see if folks. Like that idea. I think last time folks were on board with that, um, then maybe I can rework the budget just to make sure that there's. Money, um, included for the board to be able to support that. I know the student services, um. Does, I believe it's budgeted under student services that they purchase the, um. The, the medals and the, the recognition awards that are given to those students and staff, um, so maybe we can work. With them as well to do that. I also remember that it was suggested. That we have a couple of board members perhaps, um, participate in the, the selection of student of the month, um, or what that might look like. I. Think if the board is interested in that, that's, um, you know, I think that's something we can definitely do and we can. Look to, um, get a couple of board members who would be interested in participating. So let us, um, just send. Ms. Clark and I an email if you would like to participate in that process and we can get with student services to make sure that. We have two board, a couple of board members or one board member included in that process, um. Any other thoughts or questions on the, on that conversation?
I think. I guess my only, oh, sorry.
You go ahead. I'll come after you.
My only question was I. So are we purchasing the medals? Are we saying we're still going to do medals? Or? I, I guess my only question around that is, is, does it need to be in this budget? Or should it be removed?
The medals actually got shifted to student services mid-year, so it's not in your budget, um, at all anymore.
Right, and what I was suggesting, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and, and what I was suggesting is maybe the board can put some money towards that. Recognition at semester, um, so that the board can host something, um. At semester for those students and staff. So that could, that could come from the board budget. So I would just need, we would need to make sure that that's included in our budget.
And when we say mid-year, does mid-year mean March? Because on one thirty, we paid ninety-one dollars for student of the month awards.
That's because there was backlog. It was, uh, there was some confusion about which department should be paying for it. So honestly. It didn't get paid until we got to pay a bigger chunk and that's when we just sent student services, we're doing it, put everything under student services.
Gosh, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Drew. That was all I had. I appreciate.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I was just, I, I like where we're going with this because like I said, one of the things I brought up before was. It's been the same way since I was teaching. And at times teachers do not send recommendations of students to be student of the month. And I think if we. Uh, find a different path and a different way in which we can enhance the acknowledgement of knowing of the great work students are doing. That will incorporate more to be recommended to be a part of that. And so I'm in favor of the plans that we are going to be moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Um, so board, if you're interested in participating, oh, Ms. Ms. Humphries, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think I did, did I?
I thought I saw you. I thought I saw you.
Oh, no, I, I agree with Ms. Drew, we, we, uh, really need to, to look at it, because like you said, it's been the same way. Since the seventies.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will work on that, or I'll, um, maybe update the budget. If, there may be some room in the budget already to pay for that if we wanted to, but I'll take a look at that as well. Okay, any other questions, thoughts on the budget, on our board budget specifically? All right, thank you. So we have a meeting tomorrow, um, as well, um, where we can finalize a few things, Dr. Stubblefield?
I was just going to say, um, board, what we will provide tomorrow just for the general budget is an update. Um, so that, um, I know that Ms. Levers will be here. Just went back and cleaned up a few things for like library nutritional services in the gen- general department, so we'll add that this afternoon. It's actually, uh, available now in the budget folder, but we will put it on the agenda just to see if there's any questions. Wrapping back around to, um, those larger, uh, entities. Food and nutritional services and, um, the library and then the general budget line, so we'll include that for tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll also have some policy reviews tomorrow as well, so, um, if there are no other, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Wayne.
I'm sorry, I, I was distracted for a second. So help me understand, are we just dealing with the two library nutritional budgets tomorrow? Or all departments?
The library nutritional services will have, but we'll have what our recommendation is for all departments and. Um, just the general overall based off of what we have, so that you can have that information. So that when we, whenever we're looping back around, because we were able to update it, um. As we've visited with departments and, and heard the feedback from the board, so we'll have those. What we're recommending for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay, so thank you for that. Number two, so the, so if. How would I proceed? Are we going alphabetical? Or? If I, if I have a question on a department.
How are you presenting? So on the list, we can go down how it's presented on the list. Tracy, is it alphabetical on the list? I'm, let me pull it up.
It's listed in the order that we have our responsibilities set up in our budget codes.
So my recommendation, Dr. Wayne, so that is not confusing if it's not alphabetical, once we, that document that's in the budget thing. And we'll put it on board docs, and I can send it to you directly, is we, if you have questions that we follow the list. Um, since it's not alphabetical in how it's presented.
Okay, and then it's off, it's off that budget. I had a constituent ask me about, um. Are the, uh, the K U survey results on website?
Yeah, July nineteenth, remember we said the first, at the first organizational meeting, um, all of the K U audit. I mean, environmental scan.
Okay.
Uh, and the recommendations from the other two, um, will be a part of what I share out on July nineteenth.
I, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wayne, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield and Tracy, um, board and, and staff, thank you for your time this morning. And we will see you all tomorrow, so if nothing else, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Russell.
I promise we're going to get out of here. My question, I guess, is, so Ms. Paige and I can't attend tomorrow. Can you walk us through real quickly what the next steps for the budget are? We're going to look at departmental budgets tomorrow. I, I think I just want a little bit more clarity of like, what timeframe do we have?
So, right. I think right now we're just sharing the information and getting any questions that you have, um, I, ideally. Probably, and when you look at the timeline, Tracy has, um, one, we haven't settled negotiations with the teachers. But ideally, probably, um, either at the July twenty-seventh special meeting or the first August meeting, we would be asking the. Board to approve the budget if all of those things are addressed, including the. Requirements with the building needs assessments component.
So we aren't getting the building needs assessments till the twenty-seventh meeting, and then we're.
So the building needs assessments, you, you've seen them, I think the cleanup version, and here's what we will, you know, publish publicly. And here's how each one of the questions were addressed will be. Be formally at the twenty-seventh meeting, you may get it prior to that, um, once we have an opportunity to wrap back around to principles.
Okay, and so the questions. That we have about departmental budget should come to you between now and the twenty-seven? Because tomorrow will be the first time we'll see that or whatever.
No, they're out there, it's just depending on what questions. They were at the. P V, a previous meeting, it just depends on what questions you, you all have, but, yeah, anytime between. Now, twenty-seventh, um, or thereafter, yeah.
Okay, and then once we've done that part, the, whether or not we decide to have the neutral rate. That, the hearing, and then we vote on the budget. Those are the steps that are left.
Yeah, but the revenue neutral rate has to be decided at the meeting on the nineteenth, because there's a, uh, deadline of the twentieth. So that's one piece of it, but then we'll have the, uh, all of the other stuff, but that has to be decided. On the twentieth, whether you want to, uh, leave the, leave it. Flat, I mean, the recommendation from K S D is to follow, is that correct, Tracy? I, I don't want to misspeak. The recommendation from K S D is, can you say exactly what it is, Tracy?
Yeah, it is to, um, go ahead and then submit that you're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, because that sets the maximum mill levy. Um, that can be, be, um, taxed.
Gotcha. July nineteenth, the revenue ru- neutral rate conversation. The twenty-seventh, finalizing the building needs assessment, and sometime in early August, the approval of the overall budget.
Yeah, because we have a couple of special meetings in August, if the space allows, we can use it if, if, um, we're not using it all. Or the first August meeting is August nine, August ninth, so, um. The only other thing, the policy today, because we do have policy on there tomorrow, will, we, should we just roll it over for the? Third read, is that enough time, or do we need to put it off on another, like? There are a couple of things that had a first or second read today. Do you want Randy or the board, you want us to just roll it over tomorrow for the? Either second or third read, if there are some.
No, I just, I think we can do it for tomorrow as another read.
Yeah, I, I think if we can get it on there for tomorrow as a third read and the second read for the others, and then there's, there are some that will be a first read.
Yeah, and the, the ones that are left are the ones that the board may want to have a little more discussion on before they adopt. I think the ones that you've adopted to this point for first and second read are very straightforward. I mean, they're, they're basically just. Modifications based on what K S B is recommending, and they're not, they're not significant from a policy standpoint. The others might be. Transportation is one that Ms. Russell brought up last time that I, that I mentioned, so.
Thank you, and so, Ms. Russell, knowing that you won't be there tomorrow for the conversation, um. Please make sure you let us know if you have any specific questions or thoughts on, on some of those policies.
Now, you know I'm a, so what I understood, tomorrow you'll approve the first read, and then we can still make. Changes in the second read if I have questions. Correct. Whatever your proposal, okay.
Correct.
Good to me.
And, and also understand that, um, some of the recommendations that are being made do deal with. Um, changes, that does not mean that you can't have additional substantive changes to that transportation policy. Or any of the other policies at a later point in time, if you want to do it. The big discussion for this district has been. Do you want transportation of students to be, to continue to be limited to bus transportation provided by the district? Or do you want to allow students or to transport themselves? That's, that's the big piece that is not really part of what the recommendation from K S B is. But it is certainly something that is front and center as to how this board wants to handle that.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands up, so going once, twice, all right, um, so thank you, everybody, for your time today. Um, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great rest of your Monday, and we'll see you all tomorrow.